Did you get six o'clock? I got it. Can you hear me now? All right, it is six o'clock and I'd like to call the meeting to order. If you'll please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Marsha.
Here.
Dool.
Here.
Agustinelli.
Here.
McCumber.
Here.
McManus.
Here.
And Corn.
Here. All present and accounted for. First item on our agenda today is public comment. Every member of the public who would care to address the board at this time on any matter, please come to the microphone and if you'd be so kind as to give us your name and address. I'm now going to close public comment and come back to the board for review and approval of the amended agenda. And conflicts of interest, any perceived conflicts of interest? Mr. Marsha?
I feel like I'd like to not participate in the conversation regarding eight A. Based on conversations in the past.
I don't.
I feel like there could be a conflict.
It's fine.
Potential.
Seems like a stretch. I think you're, I think you're okay.
Are you gonna run for it?
For manager position, I may seek that.
It could be a conflict.
If he.
Picking the person that's gonna be picking the manager, I don't know.
That's what I thought.
That was my thought.
Somebody could make an argument that that's not right, but I'd rather not have to deal with it later on.
You don't feel comfortable, that's fine.
Yeah.
Does the board unanimously agree to allow him to stay out of that vote? All right.
I'll make a motion that we approve the amended agenda.
Support.
Motion in support to approve the amended agenda. Are there any questions or comments?
Uh, should we say what the additions are?
Um.
Or go, we're fine.
I think it's as it's.
As it is.
Are there questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is the consent calendar.
The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with in one board motion without discussion. Any member of the board, staff, or the public may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed therefrom and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted in parentheses on the agenda is approved by a single board action adopting the consent calendar. This evening you have minutes, April twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four, regular meeting, recommend approval. Bills from the general fund, thirty-seven thousand, two-hundred-eighty-one dollars, eighty-eight cents, recommend approval. Consideration of contractors' application for payment number one to Moland Excavating Incorporated for Silver Lake Road Sanitary Sewer Extension, recommend approval. Investment policy annual review, recommend approval. Consideration of resolution twenty-twenty-four dash eleven dash T, adopting township supervisor salary and establishing the position as part-time, recommend approval. Consideration of fifth amendment to the city of Traverse City and charter township of Garfield recreational authority bylaws, recommend approval. Consideration of nominating Michael Rollo to serve another three-year term on the Joint Recreational Authority Commission, recommend approval. Consideration of Joint Recreational Authority proposed annual budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five, recommend approval. Consideration of resolution twenty-twenty-four dash twelve dash T, recommending approval of a new off-premises tasting room license for Trout Possum Brewing LLC, recommend approval. Consideration of recommend of resolution twenty-twenty-four thirteen T, financial institutions which the treasurer will do business with in twenty-twenty-four, amended, recommend approval. Consideration of resolution twenty-twenty-four fifteen T, recommending approval of Class C license for High Tops TC at a new site, recommend approval. And consideration of resolution twenty-twenty-four sixteen T, recommending approval of a micro brewer license and on-premises tasting room permit for Trout Possum Brewing LLC, recommend approval.
Is there any member of the board who would like to remove anything from the consent calendar for discussion?
E, please.
Any other member of the board? Any member of the public who would like to remove anything from the consent calendar? Or staff? All right. I would attain a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item E.
I'll make the motion that we approve the consent calendar with the exception of item three E.
Support.
Have a motion in support to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item E. Any questions or comments? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Agustinelli.
Yes.
Schmuckel.
Yes.
McCumber.
Yes.
Dool.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Marsha.
Yes.
Corn.
Yes. Next is items removed from the consent calendar, it's item E.
I have a question, and Chloe, maybe you can answer this. I was a little confused with the email that you got. So with the salary breakdown that we have here, so you're not gonna be able to pay the supervisor per, so it's gonna be an actual salary then?
Yeah, you have to by law, we found out, pay a salary of the office that they get no matter what.
Okay.
You can't pay treasurer, supervisor, clerk per DMs for meetings.
Okay.
So we had to just make it a salary.
Okay, so the actual salary then is twenty-two, eight-oh-nine, eighty-nine?
Yes, we just base it off of what I had presented before.
Okay.
With all the meetings, you know, being attended, and that's the, I just rounded up to the nearest dollar.
Okay.
Do we need to change it for the fifty-dollar meetings to sixty-dollar meetings?
I did not change anything about it because I did not wanna change it now that we've passed the filing deadline, but we, we can discuss that if you guys want to.
No, that's fine, no.
Well, if they're not, if they're not gonna be paid per meeting, that doesn't matter.
Yeah.
It's sixty or sixty.
I just left it how it was, so.
Okay. That was the question I had, thank you. I make a motion that we approve item three E. Support.
Motion in support to approve resolution twenty-twenty-four dash eleven T on the supervisor's salary. Are there any questions or comments? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Schmuckel.
Yes.
Agustinelli.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Marsha.
Yes.
McCumber.
Yes.
Dool.
Yes.
Yes. Next is correspondence. We have the Traverse Connect Regional Economic Ecosystem Report for spring twenty-twenty-four, and some correspondence from Dan Dool dated May tenth, twenty-twenty-four. Would anybody like to pull anything from correspondence for discussion?
Just, I'll make a quick comment. I know with my brother Dan's thing about Rouge Road, I had left him a message that really I think it needed to be county commissioners and road commissioners possibly looking at this, and then later this afternoon, the manager of the county road commission responded, and I thought it was very appropriate and very well done. Hats off to him, that was pretty nice and quick, the way he responded back, and it made sense, it's what I kinda told him. But I didn't know what the road was categorized as, I didn't know if it was a primary, however those roads are categorized, so I was like, you're just gonna have to find that out, but he said it's busting up pretty fast, pretty quick. They really don't have a choice. Other than to run them down Rouge, it's the only western direction unless you wanna go all the way down to Hammond.
Yeah, it's not the route that they recommend, but.
No, I know, the route they recommend is three mile.
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Okay, then we will move on from correspondence to reports. Item A is the county commissioner's report.
Good evening, everyone, Brad Jewett, Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioner, Vice Chair, District Four.
Lauren Flynn, County Commissioner, District Two.
Don't have a whole lot on the agenda to talk about here, but um, first of all, I do wanna mention that tomorrow we will have a discussion on possibly purchasing the former Boy Scout camp over in East Bay Township known as Go Rec. Don't know how that conversation's gonna unfold, but that is a conversation that's gonna be in front of us tomorrow. I also wanna mention on June nineteenth and July third, we do not have our regularly scheduled county meetings, June nineteenth they're gonna do run hide fight training at the Gov. Center, so we canceled the main for then. And July third, obviously, that's right before the Fourth of July holiday, and I think quite a few of us have plans to maybe not be in the vicinity of where the meeting's gonna be held, so. One other thing I wanna point out is on your consent calendar on item C there, I do wanna just mention that the, the county board did award two-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand dollars towards that sanitary sewer project out there, and so it's nice to actually see that taking place and probably gonna come to completion here, I'm guessing in probably the next seven to ten days by the looks of their progress, so just wanted to make a note of that, so.
And I get the good stuff, so I just wanted to say that, um, thank you to the correction, National Correctional Officers and employees, 'cause last week was the week celebrating them, so thank you. And also this week is National Police Week, so thank you Sheriff, Under Sheriff, and Captain Barsha for everything that you do for our community, we greatly, greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's all.
See, may I have any questions or comments for us? Wow, okay.
It's quiet, right?
Well, with that being said, I'm gonna, I'm gonna head out to Blair Township, but um, like always, our contact information is on the county website, if you don't already have it, feel free to reach out to either one of us if you have any questions, comments, concerns, or anything like that, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you. As always, I'm staying.
The next item is an actual sheriff's report.
Actual. You got some big shoes to fill in Lieutenant Raska.
Good evening, Mike Shea, Grand Traverse County Sheriff. Roughly a year ago, we came to you talking about Flock cameras, and you were gracious enough to respond, purchase some, enter into an agreement with Flock, and they have been incredibly beneficial. So you as a board need to be commended because you are making your community safer by doing that. And you are gonna hear in a minute a couple of success stories, and you're only hearing a couple. Trust me, there are several. Almost on a daily basis, we are getting what we're calling hits on these cameras. Some were able to come to fruition, some were a day late, doesn't matter, they're working. So I wanna thank you, and now I'm gonna have, the Under Sheriff Randy Fulis is gonna give you a few examples of how successful these have been. And just so you know, we have them, as you know, in three townships, all three townships we are having successes in, so, thank you.
Good evening. So I think the sheriff might have taken my stuff off the printer, 'cause he just said a bunch of stuff that I was planning to say. Using the word commend was also what I was gonna say, I just wanted to commend the board too, that was unanimous approval by the board last year to enter into the leasing agreement with Flock Safety, and we, as the sheriff said, have had phenomenal success with them in consideration of the board's time tonight, I won't be lengthy with these things, so I tried to just pick out a few examples of how we're using these cameras proactively, reactively, and then just being a part of the Flock Safety Nationwide Network has also been very beneficial to our office in serving the community. The, one way that I'm gonna call proactive that we've been using the cameras is when our deputies, your CPOs, get into their patrol vehicles on a daily basis, they log in on their mobile data terminals in their cars, and they open the Flock Safety app on that, and if there is a stolen car, for example, that goes by a Flock Safety camera, they get an audible notification that, that that, that a stolen car, potential stolen car went by a Flock Safety camera, that thus gives the deputy a location, direction of travel for that. We just had one a couple of weeks ago, that a couple had stolen a vehicle out of the state of Wisconsin, had traveled all the way to Traverse City area, had passed a Garfield Township camera, notified our deputies. It then passed another one of your Flock Safety cameras, so gave them an updated location and direction of travel, and there were, I think, a total of four county sheriff's vehicles that kinda swooped in, ended up locating the vehicle, stopping the car, arresting the driver, recovering the stolen vehicle, and although that's reacting to something that we got from the camera, we feel that it's proactive because it's a way that we were able to identify, I mean, would've stolen cars contained, they contain the criminals that stole them, right? So in order to be proactive and when criminals come into our area, be able to locate them, arrest them, are we being able to serve the citizens and businesses and maybe keep a crime from happening by utilizing the cameras in that system? So we've encountered many stolen vehicles on the cameras and recovered nearly all of them. Many of those drivers end up having warrants, things like that, so to, to be able to keep those people from, from victimizing our citizens has been a huge thing for us too, so. We had, as I recall, last year when we came to the board, we had come off a, a few bad months where we had a lot of bad wrecks, we had some fatal crashes, I think three within a two-county area within like a month's period of time, and, and we all know that one of the, one of the city police's most infamous cases is not being able to solve one of the high-profile cases that they have had. We never want that to happen in Grand Traverse County if we can help it. And an example of a leaving the scene crash that we had recently was a vehicle on South Airport Road, created a crash, immobilized the other vehicle, and ended up taking off. We got a description of the vehicle, and how that one happened was actually the deputy who responded got a description of the vehicle, it was during the daytime, called Detective Holiday at his desk and said, hey, can you jump on Flock real quick, search this type of vehicle, and see what you get for? He was able to search with that vehicle description, found the vehicle passing one of the Flock Safety cameras, which thus gave us a license plate number, identification of the vehicle, and the registered owner. We were able to basically solve that within minutes of that crime occurring. The, the vehicle turned out to be from the Grayling area, and that's where it was heading to. Likely, we would've never solved that complaint had it not been for your Flock Safety cameras, they would've been out of the area, we would've had to be on the lookout for that vehicle, looked around maybe, you know, that night for days or whatever, and we would've never found it 'cause it wasn't from the area. But by having the Flock Safety cameras, being able to use that system, we were able to find out the vehicle, other law enforcement was able to help us on the direction of travel that they had went, verify fresh damage to the vehicle, and got that solved, and we're able to identify and arrest the perpetrator in that. So one example of how, how we're using those reactively for crimes that are occurring in Garfield Township. We, I was talking with Captain Clark over the past couple of days, who's now running our detective bureau, and Detective Holiday, who uses the system daily, and we're trying to find a couple cases and, well, what about this one, what about this one? So like Sheriff Shea said, we, we have so many success stories that it's hard to kinda narrow them down to give examples because there are so many of them, so. The one last thing I wanted to say, so we've talked about kinda how we're using them preactive, proactively and reactively, also that Flock Safety Network. If you remember, we had done a letter of understanding with Flock Safety, and even before the cameras got implemented here, they had allowed us to use the system. We were utilizing it and ended up solving some crimes in our area, because the vehicles were from downstate, we were able to get vehicles identified, suspects identified, and had good success with that. Now that we have the cameras, obviously, it's helping us a ton, and we had a recent success story where our detective bureau was contacted by the U.S. Marshal Service. If you know what the U.S. Marshals do, they basically are fugitive hunters. If there are federal investigations by the FBI, ATF, whatever it might be, and there are legitimate bad guys who are wanted on federal warrants, they will ask the marshals to help locate them. They had contacted our detective bureau, said that they believed a suspect of one of their man hunts was in the Grand Traverse County area. When asked why they thought that, they indicated that, well, this individual was involved in a human trafficking organization that had over two-hundred young female victims, they had documented at least six suicides of young females from this organization, and they believed that their bad guy was here. So they told our detective bureau that, well, the vehicle that we believe he's occupying, we put that into the Flock Safety system, and he's hitting on one of your cameras in your townships, actually it was several of them. So the marshal service ended up flying from California here, worked with our road patrol and detective bureau, they were able to use your cameras to pattern where and when that vehicle was hitting different cameras. They patterned it to a location where they knew it was gonna be around the South Airport Road area, they located it, stopped the car on Park Drive in a parking lot. Marshals ended up taking custody of the suspect, drove him immediately to Grand Rapids to a federal lockup there, and we were able to get that guy out of our community. What his intentions were being here, we don't know, but I think we would all agree that to be able to identify that that individual was here, have him located and arrested, was a good way for us to protect the citizens of our townships and counties. So those are just a few of the examples we had, and again, I could go on for quite a while, and it's, it's fun to talk about them because we're, we're enjoying being able to use those. We obviously take our commitment to our community policing relationship with Garfield Township very seriously, and for, for you folks to be able to provide us with a tool that allows us to be so effective in protecting the citizens and businesses of your townships, I mean, it, it gives us a good feeling to be able to serve you even better, so, again, we appreciate everything. Last year, you heard us say that seventy to eighty percent of all crimes involve a vehicle of some type, so, you know, that's what we're finding too, or a lot of our, our crimes were able to use Flock Safety systems to solve those. I did just wanna mention too, 'cause I talked, one of the Flock Safety reps was actually in town, and had stopped by our office, and I conversed with him for a while. There, kinda the beauty of the leasing program was that it's, they're their cameras, so anytime that they have updates or whatever, then that's beneficial. They have developed a new technology which makes their infrared system on the cameras that much better for reading plates at night. So those adaptations are being made to brand-new cameras, and within the next short period of time, they'll be replacing all of the cameras in the townships at no cost to the townships because it's a lease, but basically they'll be all new cameras with better technology with them, so I was happy to hear that. The cameras are phenomenal now, but nighttime is obviously a challenge due to lighting systems and stuff like that, and speed of vehicles may cause an issue, so, but I'm happy to know that they're continuing to do advancements in the cameras to help them be more effective, so. With that, are there any questions that you might have for me on the Flock Safety systems?
Thanks for the update, we appreciate it.
Yeah, you're very welcome, so, thank you.
Thank you. Next item is the Grand Traverse Metro Fire Report.
Good evening. Just gonna review some of the incident information that you have in your packets, starting with the pie graph page, the Grand Traverse Metro incidents by station for April twenty-twenty-four. Our total calls for the month, four-hundred-and-seventy-four. Percentage breakdown, according to station, station one, thirty percent of the calls, eight-thirteen percent, station nine at six percent, station eleven was twenty-seven percent, and station twelve with twenty-two percent. When you break that down by township, we have sixty-seven percent of the calls in Garfield, twenty-two percent in East Bay, and nine percent Acme, with about two percent of them out of the area assisting other agencies. Moving on to the next page, the Garfield Enfers incidents for April, medical assists, EMS assist, always been the predominant number of our calls, coming in at two-twenty-seven. Other emergency medical assist type incidents at twenty-four, dispatch canceled en route, those are good intent calls, somebody calls something in, or, or were dispatched and turned around by another unit that's on scene, those were at twenty-two, and then just a variety of them as we move down. If you move down and note, down under building fires, there's two within Garfield noted for the month, those are back, the late or early evening of April twenty-third, and the early morning hours of April twenty-fourth, we had two trailer fires in the King Court Mobile Home Park. Both of those fires were extinguished by our crews, we had some assists from city and other agencies. After the investigation, it was found that they were both caused by discarded smoking materials, both accidental in nature. Again, our investigators working with the sheriffs were able to pinpoint that with interviews of the occupants and then also some video. But again, unintentional, fortunately, no one was injured during those, and after those incidents, our public education crews did a little bit of a social media campaign just to kinda remind people about discarding smoker materials in a safe manner, and also, you know, reminding people to have smoke detectors. Moving on. Moving on to the Garfield EMS Incident Report, pretty standard as you normally see for the month of April, falls being one of our number-one call types with a total of four-forty, or for forty-one, difficulty breathing, twenty-eight chest cardiac issues, chest pain, twenty-two, et cetera, and then just a whole different range of medical conditions. If we compare the total metro Enfers for April, you can see those numbers, again, medical coming in at three-twenty-nine, and a total for four-seventy-four, as I'd mentioned previously. You can see here we have our chief complaints, again, falls being pretty high, that's one of the reasons why our public education specialist conducts a class with seniors called The Matter of Balance, you may be familiar with that, I teach people techniques for fall protection, try to eliminate that. So again, always just trying to be a little proactive and prevent those things. Aside from the incident reporting, just a couple highlights from the past month, we've, we've had some promotional testing for lieutenant and captain that we conducted, we did promote Lieutenant Spencer Scanlon to captain to fill that vacancy, then subsequently we promoted Far Far to Kyle Clute to lieutenant. We did receive an updated timeline for a purchase of our new engine that had been ordered, it's being manufactured by Pierce Manufacturing in Appleton, Wisconsin, that chassis assembly is gonna start June twenty-fourth, they're looking at a final assembly like mid, mid to late July, and then they'll have it ready for our inspection and delivery mid-August, approximately August thirteenth, that timeline could move a little bit, so we'll go ahead and inspect that and make sure that it's good to go, and hopefully have it back here by the end of August and be able to put it in service. Other areas, we had, we did apply for a USDA loan, a no-interest loan through Cherryland Electric Cooperative, we did get support for that at their board meeting, so we're going ahead to kinda get that packet in. That'll give us a zero-interest loan of about three-hundred-and-sixty thousand towards the purchase of that engine, so it's a portion of it, at least we'll save on some of the interest rates being so high. Let's see. I did mention the smoke detectors, we did begin our Safe Neighborhoods campaign. I did mention the smoke detectors. We did begin our Safe Neighborhoods campaign, Blitz, where our crews are going door-to-door, and neighbors offer and install smoke detectors in residents. So, they've been pretty active with that. They're announcing the location and time to the blitzes on our social media page. In our training, we are, we're pretty excited to be hosting a 40-hour rope rescue technician course at our Station 11 in conjunction with the Michigan State USAR team. We do have a number of our own members in the class, with also city fire. We have a number of firefighters from downstate that are attending. We have firefighters from the UP, Marquette, et cetera, that are there. They're going to be conducting practicals throughout Metro's areas during the week. They're doing some at the Munson Parking Garage, you know, in the city, and then at the FAA Tower out on Hammond, so. So, that's an exciting opportunity. The good thing for us is typically, we got to send our people downstate for that. It's nice that, to have that offered here, so it saves us on travel. So, that concludes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Can we talk a little bit about the fact that we're going to get a redeveloped Station 8?
Sure, we can, you know, we can talk a little bit about it.
I thought that was very exciting.
Yeah. It's the details on it, you know, still something that'll be discussed at the next board meeting. But Acme Township has, you may have heard, they acquired or purchased another building for their for their town hall. We had been sharing that building with them. They house our units at Station 8. They house an MMR unit there halftime during the day that they split with Whitewater Township. So, they're going to be vacating that space sometime after the election, because the clerk was adamant that it was not going to take place before the election. So, after that, they have offered up the remainder of that space to us. So, something that we're going to discuss in terms of what do we need to do to make it usable? And so, yeah, that would be exciting for our people.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Chief.
All right. Item D, Planning Department Report for May 2024.
Good evening. Planning Department, we have monthly reports in your packet. Just wanted to highlight a couple of things. One, the Planning Commission is now having some conversations regarding the implementation of the master plan, and focused on a couple of areas, the idea of creating a new mixed-use zoning district, also looking at some changes in tweaking the R3 multi-family zoning district. Plus, along with that, they'll be looking at some zoning ordinance changes. We kind of do that on an annual basis where we make some small modifications to some of the existing regulations that are in the zoning ordinance, so the Planning Commission will be working on those over the next few months. One of the things that we're doing as part of the implementation of the master plan is the Planning Department will be taking over the by-right review for site plan review. Currently, it's set up where the Planning Commission reviews items like special use permits, PUDs, rezonings, and so forth. All the stuff that's done by right is done by the zoning administrator, but that's at the direction of the planning director, as provided for in the zoning ordinance. With the new master plan, and we have some mixed-use areas identified, we want to have a little bit better handle on some of those, so those will be done through the Planning Department. It'll still be done administratively. It's just that it'll be myself and Steve that will be doing that work. That also does free up the zoning administrator to deal with some of the other issues that he's responsible for. So, at this time, we're kind of moving through that process of kind of getting some of those reviews done through the Planning Department. Also, we've seen a few, couple new applications come in. We have a tower, cell tower application on Zimmerman Road. It's for a portion of the Elbers Gravel Mine property for a new cell tower at that location. Also, there's, you may have heard that TJ Maxx is relocating out of the mall and in the former Bed Bath &amp; Beyond location, store location over there on 31. Also, we have a conceptual review for Two Brothers Dog Park Bar for the, a portion of the former Yonkers property. We've been working with the primary property owners on the former Cherryland Mall site to let them know that we're holding off any new applications at that location until we have a comprehensive site plan for that, and they've been working with us. We want to make sure as we see more and more uses put into the former Yonkers, former Kmart building, former Sears, that we ensure that they're coordinated together. So, I've had good cooperation from the property owners there, just so that we have a overall plan as we go for further changes over there, that we make sure that everything is coordinated, things in terms of access, stormwater, lighting, and so forth. So, we're kind of excited by that, because I think that'll give us the opportunity to really ensure that there can be some future investment into that site. So, that's all I have right now.
Yes.
So, you talked about the Cherryland Mall with no new, no, nothing new going on in there until they come up with a plan. We just approved for High Tops going into the Sears location with moving their C license there. Is that already going forward, then?
Well, I'll, we haven't received any applications for that. But it would just be a matter of put, so that, Sears has a site plan right now. And then also, the Curling Center, the former Kmart, has a site plan for most of that. And it's just a matter of getting a site plan for the remainder of that. So, they're working on that right now, but we would be holding off any applications that would go towards that change until they get that site plan in place. It's not something that should take that long. It's not like it's a massive plan. It's really just, I would say, 2/3 of that site right now is under, has a site plan. It's just about filling in those gaps.
So, the site plan, John, is of that location property, and then the site plan is showing how it might break up into elements?
Exactly.
Okay.
So, then if somebody comes in, we make sure that it fits in there, so we have basically an overall plan, is what we're looking for. It's similar to what our planning unit developments are doing, where you'll have an overall plan and then allow for different ownership, different uses going in there. It is, there's a provision in the plan, in the zoning ordinance that, in the Planned Shopping Center District, that allows the Planning Commission to require a site development plan. There was, the last one that was done for Cherryland Center was done in the late 90s when it was converted from an indoor mall to a strip mall. So, it's just a matter of, we just want a better handle on that, so it's just kind of updating that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Just mention one more thing, is that all of the owners in there are cooperating on this master plan, so.
Good.
That's
That's good news.
Step in the right direction.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a first.
Yeah, I was going to say.
It's a first, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's a good milestone.
Yep.
Any other questions for John?
Thank you, John.
Next is the Parks and Rec Report, and Derek was supposed to do the report, and he is had two of the volleyball coaches that he works with, they're sick. He is coaching two teams tonight. And begged off, but the report is in writing. I think it's too difficult to figure out. Next is the Personnel Committee Report.
As you know, we have been working with Michigan Leadership Institute to search for our next building official, as Carl is retiring. We received 40 applications, and of the 40, only eight of them had the proper license in Michigan for the building official spot. So, the Personnel Committee did phone interviews with eight individuals from various areas throughout the state, and of the eight, the committee felt that we should be inviting four of them back for in-person interviews. So, that will be taking place in the very near future, in person, and then we hoped after that to narrow it down to two to be interviewed by the board in the future. So, you know, I felt like the candidates on paper were well-qualified, and another thing I think that was important for us is how did they fit within the township? So, I think the committee felt like each person that we talked to over the phone, we haven't seen them in person, we felt like they would be a good fit so far. So, and they all seemed like great candidates. So, we'll be inviting them back for interviews and see where it goes from there.
Great.
Good.
Hi, Chuck. Are we, can anyone attend those four interviews, or are we keeping that closed?
If we have
A quorum.
One more person.
A quorum.
Yeah.
So, it's closed.
Anybody except a board member.
Anybody except a board member can go.
One thing I forgot to mention is we're going to invite Carl to participate in that, because we felt it was important that he have a say in the matter, so forgot to mention that.
Good.
So, it'll be part of them.
Very good. Item G is the Clerk's Report.
I've submitted the Clerk's Report in writing. Any questions?
I have one question. Under the Town Board, the Contracted and Other Services, it looks like we are not doing well there. It's minus $2,297. Can you enlighten?
No, if you would have asked me ahead of time, I could have come back with all the documentation, but just looking at the numbers right now, I'd have to go back and look at documentation on it.
Okay, that's something we might want to look at to increase that budget line, because we're
I'll make sure that
Not even into May, end of May.
Coming out of it properly, so I can do that, and so I will do that. Take a look at it and get back with you at the next board meeting.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Any other questions for Laney? The last item was the Supervisor's Report, and most of my report, we've already talked about through the Personnel Committee and Metro Report, so I did attend the TTCI Policy Meeting today. And we are, it's a, is a very complicated process, and a lot of he's to cross and I used to dot, but everything is moving along as it should be on time, so.
Good.
Working out well. And I did manage to make a trip down to South America.
I know. No, no kidding, yeah. Really? Surprise, surprise.
It was time.
Surprise, surprise. How long has it been? A month?
Several months.
Oh, okay.
All right, then we will move on to unfinished business, and surprise, no unfinished business. So, new business is consideration of two finalist consulting firms to recruit for the Township Manager position.
I have a question, and I read this over like three times. Is there a large difference in price here?
Um, I don't think so.
Unless I'm reading it wrong, because I thought the one from Double Hall was like $18,000, and the other one was like $9,000? Amy Sell?
Yeah, Amy Sell has a basic.
Right.
And then has, so to get it comparable, you would not go with the basic.
I think on the, on the one from Double Hall, you have a lot of add-ons that you can do or not do.
Yeah.
A lot of that is after, after the hire. Amy doesn't have things after the hire in the same way that they have.
Right.
Right. It's a package one, two, or three.
Yeah.
So, he was $14,000, but then the rest of the add-ons were quite a bit more.
Right.
I didn't think that the amount of money was a lot different, but.
And Chuck, Chet Janek, am I saying that right, couldn't give us a bid on this?
He did. Yeah, we looked at four bids, and these were the two that
Competitive?
Committee felt the most comfortable with.
Yeah.
So, the options on the Double Hall are above and beyond the 14-9.
Right.
But if we had above, if we had anything afterwards, was there going to be any more from Amy Sell that we would have to pay? Do we know that?
If we went with the top package, no, there'd be none.
Okay.
Unless there's like meals or
Right.
minor things.
I think on Amy's, one thing that I liked about her working with the Metro was that she did the interviews that you could access online and look at as board members.
Mm-hmm.
And I found that really helpful with that, and these guys are bringing in the people at cost.
Right. Yeah, at a large cost.
So, you know, we had that. One thing with Amy's, I was kind of going through, you know, her pedigree here, and neither of them have been in business for very long.
I know. I noticed that, too.
So, but we have a little history with Amy. So, I guess I'm thinking unless we can negotiate with Double Hall and have them do some of the things that Amy is willing to do, then.
It's a possibility. I'm not, I've worked with both of them, and I think of both
Either one would
Yeah.
Have a recommendation.
Yeah. Has Double Hall done anything locally here?
Double Hall was, did the, Nate was the person who filled in for the
Yeah, I know that.
City manager for maybe done a couple of things in the area, but not anything pops into mind.
But only a part, I mean, if you look at the base price of Amy's, and if they're not going to exceed that, and then you look at the base price of Double Hall, they're only a part 4,400.
Right.
And they could spend that to get people here and interview and all that stuff.
Very easily, yeah.
I mean, that's not a hu, I mean, if it was a bigger difference, I would be more like, maybe, but that's not, that's not a big difference.
Are we thinking about going with a base for Amy's? Are we only looking at her $18,000 bid?
No, I would think we would look at the
$18,000?
Yeah.
The top one.
Yeah. Not a bid.
I would like to make a motion that we contract with Amy Sell.
I'll support.
We have a motion and support to contract Amy Sell. Are there any questions or comments? All right. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Schmuckel?
Yes.
Duel?
Yes.
Justin Nellie?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Harsha?
I'm not voting.
McManus?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
And that is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Last item under new business is consideration of shared funding for the Town Line Road Project. Terrifically bad road.
Oh, tell me about it. I went down it today.
The Road Commission has passed a resolution. The East Bay has passed their resolution last night. Three years ago, the Road Commission set up a local road fund for each township, and based on the size of the township and the number of roads, the dollar amounts varied, but what we are considering is to basically match a contribution from East Bay, which is a little more than their fund allows them, but they'll, they'll make up the difference. And then our fund would cover it entirely, so it wouldn't come out of the township funds, but out of this set aside at the Road Commission. And then they're asking the County Commission to contribute as well. It's a shared road between the two townships, so I think equal amounts is fair. And it's a, they said it does not come out of our our fund balance at all. I'd say, I said it does not come out of our, our fund balance at all. Would be nice to have a good road there.
Oh, yeah.
Say that again, how it won't come out of our.
The Road Commission, several years ago, established a, a contribution to each township's account with them. And ours is like $6,000 and some dollars a year. So, or $60,000.
I was going to say.
It takes a lot of years.
I skip a zero sometimes.
Okay.
So basically, we have, we have over $180,000.
Oh, okay.
And that would be the portion that we would contribute. And then East Bay is a little less than that, but they would make up the difference from their fund balance.
Good.
Do you know what the total cost estimate is for it?
I think it's right in the neighborhood of a million bucks.
Okay.
It's like a million dollars a mile. That's the, that's the going.
Wow.
Reconstruct the road.
Yep.
Chris?
We don't have a policy that dictates how we make decisions on spending that money, do we?
It is a, it is a Road Commission fund that was set aside for us. It has, I mean, their policy is what we operate under, but it, it allows us to spend these funds on any local road project we want to do.
It's a good use for it.
Yep.
Could we spend it, I guess I'm just throwing this out there, like with Denise's Road, could it have been spent to offset the cost of that from residents?
That was my question, too. I don't know that. I think it's local roads.
Primary, however they categorize, we're back to that road categorization again. Primary, secondary, local?
Yeah, it's a, I think it's for, not for subdivision roads.
Public, general use, so it's probably a primary usage, not a dead-end.
I don't think primary is the word they use.
Sorry, I tried. No, that's fine.
I think you're close.
It makes sense.
Yeah, it makes a lot of sense.
That it would be public.
Yeah.
I was going to mention the point that he did, you know, we have subdivisions who are paying for it themselves.
Right.
We have correspondence from a gentleman who lives on a road who says it's falling apart. So why, you know, why, why does Townline get the funding and not them? But I, I feel like when you look at the big picture and planning, we've learned that we're not going to get a bridge.
Yeah.
And this would allow for better north-south flow to help solve that problem or east-west traffic problem. So I feel like you could make an argument that this is a better, a good use of the funds.
It, it is, I think, a heavily traveled road, and I think it would be more heavily traveled if it wasn't like a tire wheel killer.
Yeah, yeah.
They should do something and make it a main entrance into the airport.
Yeah.
So the airport is making an effort to see if they can secure funds, because apparently there is a way that can be done, but their original response was they can't spend money off the airport property. And now they've found that there is potentially something. So they're, they are doing their best to.
Because that could be really nice, we're so regional, that coming in on Hammond and jumping on that road and going rather than, you know, going down by the bay and all that. Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion if you're ready.
Yes.
Okay. Make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-14-T, a resolution of support for a collaborative agreement for repair of Townline Road.
Support.
We have a motion and support to approve the Resolution 2024-14-T for the repair of Townline Road. Are there any questions or comments? And a roll call vote, please.
Harshap?
Yes.
Schmuckel?
Yes.
Tecumber?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Duel?
Yes.
Justinelli?
Yes.
And Corn?
Yes. Met, unanimous, thank you. That brings us back to public comment.
Am I able to pass a few things out?
Uh, sure. You got three minutes.
All right. Three minutes to talk or pass, is that included?
All included.
All right. Then I'll talk and pass. My name is Patrick Brokis. Here with my business partner, Ryan McCune, represent La Resta Street Development. We are currently building 27 condos.
Thank you.
In the Carson Street, La Resta area. Ryan and I are here tonight to speak to Carson Street Apartments that borders our association. We are finishing out the development of Kensington West condominium. Carson Square Apartments, a beautiful building that's approximately 10 years old with, we have no exception to, by goodwill, managed by a management company. Our issue is the blight associated with the porches of the individual apartments. The lease agreement that was approved by Garfield Township prohibits, there's, if you look, so the top few pages, let me stop, is our development, our units, and the, an overview. That's, the third one is a rendering, the first two are actual pictures of our units. And then we go on to, I took these pictures a couple of months ago because I had plans to address this a couple of months ago, but this is, this is what the porches look like of Carson Street apartment, both upper and lower. The lease agreement, I'm going to focus on three things. Personal items left outside on the grass is in direct violation of the lease when they were approved for the subsidized and through Garfield Township. Bikes on the porch are in direct violation of the lease. Landlord has the right to exclude personal items on porches, as you can see that that's, that's not being done as well. Approximately a year ago, the condo association, Kensington West Association, Ryan, myself, met with Supervisor Corn and expressed our concerns regarding Carson Street. He immediately facilitated a meeting with Goodwill and the management company on site. I had extremely high hopes after leaving that meeting as, as we met with the management company, but especially Dan Barron, who, we walked the, the site. He said, he looked at me, said, we can do better. He shook my hand and said, we will be, do better, or they will do better, or we will get involved and make sure that it's better. That was approximately a year ago. You can see those are, pictures are about 60 days old. That's not, I wouldn't consider that better, or living up to his, to his promise. I'm not sure what can be done, but if you review the lease, they're in direct violation of the lease that was submitted of the time of approval. So we just ask that potentially, we have 27 condos, we have nine in the ground with an additional 18 to build yet. We just ask for your support and maybe taking a look at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments?
Um, I did get an agreement from Goodwill that they were going to clean it up. And to be honest with you, I drove through there shortly thereafter, and it was improved, so it must have fallen back into the same state.
The president of the association approves the.
Yeah, there's no, there's no additional public comment. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to make.
But in any event, I, I can see now that we're going to have to revisit it.
Okay.
And maybe we'll have to write a citation.
All right.
We'll see.
Well, can we call it blight or not?
They have an agreement with us about how they will maintain the building.
Yeah.
So that was part of their special use permit. All right. Any other public comment? All right. Is there any other business to come before the board today?
I have a question.
Yes.
Neighbors are asking me, have you heard anything about our road?
Not recently, no.
Is there a wonder if it was going to be done this year or not?
That was what I heard, it was going to be done this year.
That's what I heard too, so, okay.
Thank you.
So I don't know if the flock camera got the guy that had the stolen Toyota that I found behind my barn in the morning at 6:15 when I got up to get coffee. He was parked behind my place, and I looked at him through binoculars, and I'm like, I don't know who this dude is. So I went down there and confronted him and asked him what he was doing. He says, I'm trying to figure out where to go. I said, you're trying to figure out where to go, so you pull on a private farm and park behind it on my property? I said, get the hell off and don't come back. So as he went out, I filmed his plates, and I should have got a film of him anyways. Hour later, I thought, you know what? I'm going to call and have one of the deputies come out and go talk to this idiot and say, don't ever come back. Well, when I called Central, they said, was it a gray Toyota 4Runner? I said, how did you know this? And he stole that out of a garage from your neighbors and obviously made it as far as your farm, and we caught him. So he's, he's in custody, and he said, do you want me to go down and file a trespass warning against him? I said, sure, let's do that. But he's going to go up a creek and, without a paddle, so. But anyways, I don't know if the flock caught that guy or not, but it just, I was like, whoa, and I went down and confronted him. But I mean, what do you do in my position? You know, I got to find out, number one, who they are, are they a customer or not? And do they know somebody in my barn? Well, this guy didn't, and I mean, I probably should have called and had a squad car go in with me, but.
Mm-huh. That's your first mistake.
But my wife did that, and she's like, ooh, man.
That was your first mistake.
So, but I went into my barn at 1:00 in the morning, too, and had lights on, went in there, and it was kids showing their friends their horses. And I'm like, at 1:00 in the morning? So I never know what's going on. But next time I'll call and have one of your boys come.
At least have us go with it, right?
Yeah, yeah. And they would have caught him there and found out that it was stolen out of a neighbor's garage. So, yeah, I do like the flock cameras, I think they're amazing. And I don't know if that caught him or not, it might have, but.
Give it to you, great.
Is there any other business for the good of the township? There are no objections, we will stand adjourned.
All right, come on, I'll give it to you in a little second.